Ron said something interesting that I had missed in news that apparently yesterday's European Tour event, I think Abu Dhabi said that Jordan Spieth was penalized one stroke for pace of play. So it does happen. All right, Rule 7, dealing with practice. This rule was broken up into two sections, dealing with before, between rounds, and then during the round. Before or between rounds and match play, the player may practice on the course. That is okay. Stroke play is going to be very different. The player not only may not practice, but he's also not allowed to test the surface of a putting green by rolling a ball or by walking or scraping the surface before a round of a stroke play competition, or when two or more rounds are scheduled over consecutive days between those rounds. So why the great difference in results there between match play and stroke play? Well, I think a lot of it has to do with just the nature of those two forms of play and providing equal opportunity. That, for example, if, let's say, Ken and I are scheduled to play a match at 8 o'clock tomorrow, then in theory, we each have the equal opportunity to go practice on the course before our 8 o'clock match. And the players who might say, Bill and Arnold have a 10 o'clock match, they really don't care if Ken or I practice on the course before our own match. Then, however, in stroke play, what if Ken has a 7:00 a.m. starting time and I have a 2:00 p.m. starting time? Then I would have a much greater opportunity to practice on the course before the round, which doesn't seem right with regards to Ken. So that's why in stroke play, that is not allowed, and match play, that is okay. But notice that in the note, the committee may flip that, may prohibit practice on the course before the round and match play. Because, for example, maybe the committee says, look, you know, our maintenance staff has their hands full and they don't need all these golfers out there getting in their way. And so they might prohibit it in match play and stroke play, they might permit it. For example, they might say, look, this is our, this is just a club tournament. Ken is a dues-paying member of the club. Why shouldn't he be allowed to play his course whenever he wants, even if it's between rounds? If he wants between Saturday and Sunday's round, if he wants to go play nine holes with his son Saturday evening, you know, why not allow that? He's not going to gain the additional information about the golf course. Stroke play, if there is a breach of this rule, he would be disqualified. All right, so now during the round. During the play of a hole, a player may not make any practice strokes, period. Between the play of two holes, he is allowed to make some practice strokes in some limited circumstances. And that is, he's allowed to practice putting or chipping, no other type of stroke, on or near the putting green of the hole last played, a practice putting green, or the next tee ground, provided that the practice stroke is not made from a hazard and is not unduly delayed play. So what does that mean? Let's say that a player is in a group, they're making the turn, they get to the 10th tee, and there's a backup on the 10th tee. So where could the player practice putting or chipping? He could go to the ninth green, his last hole. He could go to the practice putting green, if that's nearby, and he could practice putting or chipping on or near the next tee ground. Notice that tee ground is very specific. That's say, if Andy and I are playing in a tournament, we're playing from the blue tee markers, then that means that we can only practice putting or chipping on or near that two clubbing area defined by the blue tee markers. So that means that we cannot, for example, go to the back tee, 30 yards behind, and practice putting or chipping. That is not permitted. So practice during the round is restricted by the type of stroke and the location for those practice strokes. So you have to meet both criteria. So, for example, you can't practice putting or chipping on another tee area 30 yards away. And likewise, you can't hit full shots from, you know, on or near that next tee ground. It's only putting or chipping. All right, good question. Jim asks if a player is playing a multi-round tournament, and he has a suspicion as to where the hole's going to be the next day. And maybe, there might even be a dotted paint out there already. And he says, I want to get a leg up on everyone and see how this is going to putt tomorrow. After he finishes that hole, can he go putt towards where he thinks the next day's hole location will be? And the answer is yes, that is okay. However, though, look at Note 2 at the end of the rule. The committee may, in the conditions of competition, prohibit practice on or near the last putting green, and prohibit rolling the ball on the putting green of the hole last played. And that is really there for the professional level, where the tour players, say, would be likely to do that, for the very reason you mentioned. But otherwise, that is absolutely fine to do. All right, now, the rule has kind of a curious sentence saying that strokes made in continuing the play of a hole, the result of which has been decided, are not practice strokes. So what does that mean? Well, let's go through an example, and that's, well, we'll look at a couple of decisions in that regard. Decision 7-2/1.5. In a match between A and B, A holes out for four. B lies four, and his ball's in a bunker. Thus, the hole's been decided. So we know that even if B holes a stroke, he'll lose the hole. So we know A wins the hole. If B plays from the bunker, the stroke is considered a practice stroke. Now, why is that an important question? Is you can't, between the play holes, practice from a hazard, from a bunker? And the answer is no, that's not considered to be a practice stroke. The strokes made in continuing the play of a hole, the result of which has been decided, are not practice strokes. So that means that B may play that bunker shot and not be penalized. Then the next decision also adds further clarification as to what is meant by continuing the play of a hole. So let's say we have a case where Bill and I are playing a match against each other, and we hit our tee shots down the fairway. Bill hits his second shot up onto the green 10 feet from the hole, and I hit my second shot out of bounds. And go up there, I find it's out of bounds, and I concede the hole to Bill. So the hole has been decided, Bill winning the hole. That if I were to drop a ball near where, say, my ball had gone out of bounds and just play on, even though I might be 50 yards away, so I'm not chipping and I'm not on or near that putting green, that would not be considered a practice stroke, which means it'd be okay for me to do that. That, as the decision says, its interpretation is not restricted to continuing the play of the hole in accordance with the rules. All right, now, the exception, when play has been suspended by the committee, before resuming play, the player may practice, as provided in this rule, anywhere other than on the competition course, and see as otherwise permitted by the committee. So with that in mind, take a look at the very last decision, 7-2/12. This is similar to that, to the fact situation, at least of the decision we saw under 6-8. In a stroke play competition, the committee suspends play and schedules resumption for 8:00 a.m. the following day. Player whose group will be the third to play on particular tee wishes to continue practicing on designated practice area after play has been resumed at 8:00. Because his group won't be able to play at 8:00. What's the ruling? Well, when play is resumed at 8:00, the exception to this rule no longer applies, so therefore, he's restricted to practicing in accordance with the rule itself. So we know from 6-8 that the player has to be at the tee when it becomes possible for his group to play. So this decision deals with where he may practice. So now, once the 8:00 strikes and the committee sounds the horn to signal a resumption of play, he can only practice as permitted by the rule itself. So let's say, for example, if he's going to resume play on the fifth tee, that he could practice putting or chipping on or near the fourth putting green, or the practice putting green, or the 15th ground, but nowhere else, so he can't hit full shots on the practice area, for example. All right, penalty for breach of Rule 7-2 for either practicing during the play of a hole or practicing between holes in a manner or location not permitted is the general penalty. And the first note, just something to keep in mind, that a practice swing is different from a practice stroke and may be taken anywhere, provided you don't breach the rules. So, for example, in a bunker, it's okay to take a practice swing as long as you don't actually touch the sand with the club. So what's the difference between a practice swing and a practice stroke? It's that a practice stroke involves intent to strike a ball, and a practice swing does not involve the ball. Let's see, the decisions. Which one? 7-1B/5? Does that come off a lot? All right, well, let's look at it. In stroke play, a competitor's caddy practices on or tests the putting green surface of the course before a competitor tees off. Is the competitor disqualified? Answer is no, because he's responsible for the actions of his caddy only during the stipulated round. And that's an important distinction, because if the answer were different, then think about what would need to take place before your round, especially, say, if you don't know your caddy. If you go to a course, you pay, you have a caddy assigned to you, do you really want to make the player, you know, interrogate the caddy? Okay, since midnight, what have you been doing? You know, for a lot of reasons, we don't want to go down that road, do we? So you're responsible for your caddy's actions only during the round. But what is interesting, on the professional tour level, where they're obviously very conscious of this, that, as you can imagine, they're not crazy about the idea of the caddies going out, say, the morning of the rounds, and finding that day's hole location, putting down their digital level to get some readings and things like that. So a purely disciplinary matter enforced by fines, they require caddies to stay off the putting greens between rounds.
This is an interesting question online. Does the note to Rule 7-2 apply to Rule 7-1? And his meaning is, before a stroke play event, may a player dig in to a bunker with his feet and strike sand in the bunker without striking the ball?
Oh, okay, all right. Well, let's look at before the round and during the round, variations of that. So let's say that Ken's inviting me over to Hidden Glen, never played there, but want to get a feel for their bunkers, and we're playing in a stroke play competition there. And before, I get there early, I go out onto the course, I go into a bunker, I dig in with my feet, and I take some practice swings, striking the sand. Any breach there? Answer is no, because I'm not practicing, I'm not making a practice stroke. So no penalty beforehand. But then, let's say, we've now started around, first hole, I managed to hit the fairway, hit the green, make a par. But then, leaving, I think, wow, sand in bunkers. Given how much it rained last night, that could be tough. I want a feel for what the sand's like. So on the way to the second tee, I stop in the bunker, and I dig in, I take some practice swings and hit the sand, touch the sand with my club. Any breach there? Answer is no, that's okay also. The only prohibition is, we'll see next week on Rule 13, we're testing the condition of a hazard, because it's when your ball is in that hazard or in a similar hazard, so that'd be okay to do. And it doesn't seem right, and if someone were to do that, it would look odd, but that is allowed by the rules. Yeah, John? Oh, okay. Okay, so the question is with Decision 7-1B/6. 54-hole competition to be played on three consecutive days, second round was canceled. And the point of the decision is that people cannot practice on the course on that second day because it was, the tournament was scheduled to be played over consecutive days. And your question, John, is if, let's say, it's a two- or three-round tournament, and the first round is canceled, then are you allowed to practice on the course automatically on the first day? Let's see, when two or more rounds are replayed over consecutive days. And it says, and the answer says, because the competition is scheduled to be played over consecutive days. But my concern there is that I don't think you're not between rounds, so I'm not, I don't think there's a problem with that, with that. But I think in either case, like in this case, it makes a lot of sense for the committee to say, unless it just wants players to stay off the course, just for the care of the course, makes sense to allow players to do that. And how did, what did you do?
Well, we sent someone wave out. The course became unplayable after about two holes. We resumed the first. After waiting around about four or five hours, the course was somewhat saturated. We sat around another two hours, basically eating lunch, and suddenly it started to get stoppering, get a little bit nicer. And competitors, we were gone. The competitors had asked the course to play, and the course had left. And it kind of felt like the competition had not yet started. So we did not penalize.
Yeah, I think that's right, because the rule talks about practicing between those rounds, and there hasn't yet been a round. So I agree, whereas in the decision, they have played one round, so they are practicing between rounds. But yeah, that's a good question, John. All right, let's see. Rest us. Decision 7-2/5 comes up occasionally. During play of a hole, player saw some balls from the joint practice range line on the course and flicked one back to the range for this club. Is he in breach of this rule? Well, it depends on the circumstances. Sometimes, the hitting of a range ball back towards the range would be a breach of Rule 7-2, but the casual flicking of the ball, apparently only for the purpose of tightening up the course, is not a breach. So a player can't just set his bag down and then hit a full eight iron back to the range. But if he's just really flicking it back with the sole purpose of just tightening up the course, then that's okay. That's not considered to be a practice stroke. All right, any questions on Rule 7? All right, on to Rule 8. And last week, we talked about definition of advice, and that's really the hardest part in dealing with Rule 8-1. Because the rule itself is straightforward, but often the challenge is knowing whether the information being given or being sought constitutes advice. During the stipulated round, a player must not give advice to anyone in the competition playing on the course other than his partner, or ask for advice from anyone other than his partner or either of their caddies. All right, first point, this rule applies only during the stipulated round. So that means, for example, that if, say, playing in a stroke play competition, play is suspended because of bad weather, that before resuming play, I can get advice. I can ask Bill to look at my putting stroke inside locker room, or what have you. That is fine to do. So a player must not give advice to anyone in the competition playing on the course other than his partner. So if Bill and I are playing together, but we're not partners, let's say we're fellow competitors, and I, and on the fourth hole, I hit a six iron, I come up well short, and Bill doesn't say anything, doesn't ask anything, and it's his turn to play next, and I say, Bill, you should hit at least a five. I came up short with a six. Am I in breach of the advice rule? Yes, I've given advice to a fellow competitor playing on the course. Is Bill in breach of the advice rule? No, because he didn't ask for advice in that case. Player may not, may not ask for advice from anyone other than his partner or either of their caddies.
What if the player's just thinking aloud, yeah, I shouldn't have five, you know?
Okay, all right, that's a good question.
Reflexing aloud.
Yeah, if that's the case, if he's truly just talking to himself and not trying to relay information to fellow competitors, then there's no penalty. Yeah, so as I think we said last week, why you see a number of officials trying not to be within earshot of a player, so they can hear what the players are saying.
If you and I were playing in a stroke play round, and we came to the eighth and last hole of our round, and I hauled a putt, or attempted to hole a putt from 20 feet per birdie, and basically missed it, tapped in for par, and then turned to you and said, I would play a little bit more break?
That sounds like a question on the coaches' quiz. But yeah, but the question is...
That would not be a breach.
Yeah, yeah, that's take, it's a good question, because it requires a careful reading of the rule, and also, you also need to know a decision, there's a start Rule 3 as to when stipulated round stroke play is over. So let's say Bill and I are playing stroke play together, and on the 18, our 18th hole, Bill putts from 30, 30 feet away, and he misses, then he taps in. Then I still have a putt on a similar line. He says, John, you should play a lot more break than you have in mind. Is that true? Broke a lot more than I thought it would. So that is giving advice. So the question, though, is, did Bill give advice during his stipulated round? And the answer to, and this is after he hauled out his final hole, when you look at Decision 3/3, it says, in individual stroke play, the competitor stipulated round has ended when he has completed play of the final hole. So that means his round is over, so Rule 8-1 no longer applies to him. So no penalty for him in that case, and is there any penalty to me? No, because I had not asked for advice. Now, it would be a breach if I had said, if I had asked for advice from Bill, even though Bill had finished his round, because you're not allowed to ask for advice from anyone other than his partner or either of their caddies. So to look at this, take a look at Decision 8-1/25, just to get comfortable with the penalty structure and, you know, who is penalized and then. And keep in mind the two different aspects of the rule. You're not allowed to ask for advice, you're not allowed to give advice. In singles match play, if A asks for advice from B, then what? As soon as A asks for advice, A was in breach of Rule 8-1, so A lost the hole, and it's irrelevant whether B answers. In a four-ball match, A and B versus C and D, if A asks for advice from C, then we know that what? A is going to be disqualified from the hole. And C gives advice, well, then C is disqualified from the hole because A's breach did not determine, did not decide the hole, because B and D know we're still in it. And in stroke play, and this is where it gets the difficult one, if A asks for advice from B, A incurs penalty of two strokes, but if B answers, i.e. if B gives advice, he also incurs a penalty of two strokes. And that's difficult, that Bill and I are staying on the fourth tee, and I say, Bill, what club are you going to hit? And he says, John, I'm going to hit six iron. That we're each penalized two strokes, and that's difficult, because human nature is what? When someone asks you a question, answer it. And to be able to have the discipline and awareness to stop yourself from answering that is difficult. All right, and we'll look at a few other decisions relating to the advice rule later.
This happened a number of years ago in a PGA, Wisconsin PGA event, where a player on a R3 hit a shot, he stiffed it, and then he took the club, number facing out, walked back toward his fellow competitors, showing them the number on the club. Rules official was standing there, and he penalized the player. Player appeals to the committee, and the committee overturns the rule, overturns the breach, the penalty. Did you say that was the correct?
Well, the answer will depend as to what type of conversation you have with the player, that if the player...
There was no conversation.
Well, and the committee, I think, needs to have a conversation with the player to determine if there's a breach. If the player was holding his club to, and showing it to his fellow competitors, so that they could see what he hit, then I'd say that he has given advice. But if he says, oh, no, I wasn't doing that, I was just walking back to my bag. And if you believe that, then there's no breach. You know, so it's, and that's one of the tough parts you have to determine what he was trying to do. It's a little bit like Kyle's comment, of, you say, oh, jeez, I should have hit one more club, I should have hit a five iron. If you just say that to yourself, that's fine, but if you say it with the intention of influencing, say, what club your fellow competitor is going to do, then you're giving advice. All right, with 8-2, indicating the line of play, and this is broken down to other than on the putting green and on the putting green, there are some differences between the two, with on the putting green being more restrictive as to what the player may do. The player may have the line of play indicated to him by anyone, but no one may be positioned by the player for that purpose on or close to the line, or an extension of that line beyond the hole while the stroke is being made. So the common example of this is you have a blind shot over a hill. Let's say your fellow competitor or caddy goes to the top of the hill to show you the line, but then the fellow competitor or caddy needs to move before you actually make the stroke. Now, any mark placed by the player or with his knowledge for this purpose must be removed before the stroke is made. So it's okay to place, say, a towel on the top of the hill, as long as it's removed before you actually play. All right, 8-2B is going to be much more restrictive. When the ball is on the putting green, the line of putt may be indicated before, but not during the stroke by the player, his partner, or either of their caddies. So you're thinking about partner or either of their caddies, they are also what? The only people from whom you can ask advice. So that means asking for it to have a line of putt indicated is really treated the same as essentially asking for advice. Previously, under Section A, anyone can indicate the line of play. For example, the blind shot on the putting green, the line of putt can only be indicated by your partner or either of your caddies. But in so doing, the putting green must not be touched, and mark must not be placed anywhere for the purpose of indicating line of putt. and mark must not be placed anywhere for the purpose of indicating line of putt. So must not be, the mark must not be placed anywhere or at any time for indicating line of putt. But even if you, say, put a water bottle beyond the hole on the fringe of the green to serve as an aiming point, and then remove it before the stroke, it's still a breach. As soon as you placed that water bottle there for that purpose, it's a breach. Penalty for breach of this rule for all sections is lawful, or two penalty strokes.
It says in decision eight dash two B slash three, if I substituted the word fellow competitor in place of the word caddy, what if the player asks that fellow competitor, where do I aim instead of what is the line of play?
Okay, so we had an online question dealing with decision eight dash two B slash three, saying, if I'm imagining this correctly, that let's say that Bill and I are fellow competitors. My ball is just off the putting green. I ask Bill, my fellow competitor, where I should aim to play my shot, i.e. for how much the chip shot would break. Would that be a breach? And the answer is yes. I would say that was a breach of rule eight dash one. Because in this case, and there is a difference, I don't want to spend too, too much time, but there's kind of a fine line between indicating the line of play and suggesting the line of play. For example, asking someone, you know, if, if Bill and I are playing a course that he's familiar with, I've never played before, we get to a blind tee shot, and I say, "Bill, where's the hole?" And he says, "John, you know, you see that orange in the distance that, that's the right center of the fairway." And he said, "Okay, got it. Thank you." That that's different than, say, our standing on a tee, and Bill saying, "Here, John, you want to hit it down the right side of the fairway, because the ball will kick to the left." Then he's really suggesting how I play the shot, rather than just indicating a factual line. And same with the chip shot here. That with the chip shot, assuming we don't have a blind chip shot, but if you're just chipping from off the green and see everything, and I ask Bill, basically, you know, where should I aim? I'm really asking for advice. I'm asking him, where should I play? I'm not asking him a factual question such as, you know, where, where's the flagstick? Where's the center of the fairway, or, or what?
No, but if you were to, I'm sorry, but if you were to say to a fellow competitor that looking at a green, you know that the direction of play is left to right, although you can't see it, could you say to him, this green slopes left to right?
Yeah, and I think that's a, a good point, Ken, because there can be a line between stating what's just physically and factually accurate and suggesting something. So let's say, for example, so in Ken's case, where you know a green slopes from left to right, but for some reason, it just doesn't look like it. If you were just to say, you know, if we're standing at fairway, wherever, saying just factually, "This green slopes from left to right," you know, that's a factual statement. But what, what would be a problem would be to say, if, though, if you were to say, "John, make sure you aim 15 feet left of the hole, because the green slopes from left to right." Then you cross the line, now you're suggesting how I actually play the shot.
Can I tell you a suggestion as to how you play the hole?
What, what, what would be a suggestion?
Well, just even factually saying, "This green slopes left to right." The only reason why you're going to say that is to influence the way somebody plays the shot.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, and it's a good point. It's a very fine line, and it's, a similar situation could be with the wind. You know, what if you and I are sitting in the fairway, and I say, "Jeez, I can't figure out what's the wind doing." And you say, "It's against us and from the right." You know, I think you'd say wind direction is just a factual thing, but is it going to, knowing that, could it have an impact? That information could have an impact, but it's not influencing. You know, if, if you were to say, you know, "Yeah, it's against us and right to left, so I'm going to hit one more club and aim 20 feet right of the hole," then, you know, you kind of, kind of crossed the line. But just something factual, which way is the ground slope? Which way does the wind, is the wind blowing? Where's the center of the fairway? Things like that are okay, but it does start to get pretty close, and there can definitely be an area there. And I can definitely understand, especially in some cases, you know, you say, "Well, which way does the green slope?" So, jeez, you're really saying which way does this putt break? Yeah, you know, and, and may, maybe there is a line, there's a point where you can cross that line. If I have a five foot putt, and, you know, if I say to you, "Andy, which way does the green slope between my ball and the hole?" You know, I, you know, I, that doesn't seem right. But, but I'm trying to figure out, okay, why? How is that a problem versus, say, just general information on the tee, when you say, "Okay, it's downhill," and then you hit uphill to the green, the green slopes left to right. How's the difference? I, I don't know. I've got to think about that. But that, that definitely doesn't seem right. Oh, yeah, yeah, and, yeah, John, I, that's a good point, that with yard, yardbooks, that they, they can, well, yardbooks can have factual information, but often they have, try to have plain tip also. You know, like, favor the left side, make sure you hit one more club on your approach, and things like that. But that's okay, because that was all published before the round and, and, and everything. But, you know, I know, that's, that's a good point as well. And you could argue, I don't know if you've ever seen, but at the professional level, occasionally, some courses, people make up just green charts, going into great, with a separate book that has nothing but the green contours. And you could argue that that's just the same. That's purely objective factual information. But, yeah, with the five foot putt, though, and I ask you, "Which way does the green slope in these five feet?" Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, that, I have to think about that, because that, that doesn't seem right, does it?
Well, in Palm Springs, there's a lake or a town that's the low point. I forget the name. So if I'm standing in the middle of the fairway, and I say to somebody, "Which direction is it to such and such?" Which will tell me-
Oh, okay.
Is that a question, say, right?
Okay, okay, yeah. So if you, if, if your belief is that every putt breaks towards a certain area-
It does.
That. And if you, and you, but you can't see it, because you're behind a mountain or whatever, or a hill. Is it okay to ask, "Where's Indio?" or whatever? Yeah, yeah, I, I think that's absolutely fine to do. Because then you're just asking a geographical question. All right, that's, that's okay.
With regard to eight dash two B, if you were caddying for me, and my ball were on the putting green, but the line of putt would extend through the fringe,
Okay.
Under rule eight dash two B, I cannot touch the putting green, and you could not in indicating the line of play as my caddy. Could you touch the line of putt in the fringe, because you're not touching the putting green? Or would that be a violation of rule sixteen dash one B?
All right, so with the situation where my ball is on the putting green, but because of the shape of the green and/or the amount of break, my line of putt actually goes off the putting green. I'm going to try to putt it through the fringe. Am I allowed, or am my caddy allowed, to touch the fringe to indicate the line for putting? And I think with there, with eight dash two B, there'd be no issue, because eight dash two B just says you can't touch the putting green itself. However, you said you would run a valuable sixteen dash one A, because then you would be touching your line of putt. That even though it's off the putting green, that is still your line of putt, and just for touching it, that'd be a breach. One A, you know, it just says you can't touch your line of putt. All right, let's look at some decisions. Yeah. Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. But the note, this allows in team competition, the committee to appoint another person who may give advice to members of that team. And then, I forget where it's tucked away now. It might be in How to Conduct a Competition, that publication by the USGA, but the USGA allows in team competitions among educational institutions, allows them to appoint two people who can give advice. Was that your question? Yeah. So that, that gives assistant coaches a larger role. And that's up to the committee to decide if they, if they want to allow that. All right, decision eight dash one slash two, exchanging distance information. This is something we talked about last week. But just for emphasis, that any and all distance information is not advice and is permissible to say. So if I ask Bill how far my ball is from the hole, that is okay to. Eight dash one slash six is kind of an interesting one, and it can be somewhat of an extreme decision. During play of the sixth hole, A asks B what club he, B had used on the fourth hole, which is a par three of a similar length. Was A in breach of the advice rule? Answer is no. So really, what we can gather from that is any info, any information relating to previous strokes made is a fair game, that is safe. Even if A is asking that specifically to help them determine what club to hit on number six, that's okay to say. Okay to ask, and okay to be answered. Decision eight dash one slash 16 shows a fine line for both players as well as for referees to make sure they don't cross it. B's ball is lined badly. He's deliberating what to do when his fellow competitor says, "You have no shot at all. If I were you, I would deem the ball unplayable." Did A give advice? Answer is yes. A's suggestion could have influenced B in determining this play, and therefore it constitutes advice. So that's difficult. What could A have said that would not be, have been advice? Could, what if A had said, and this is getting close to it, what if he says, "Do you know all your options under the unplayable ball rule?" Which, you know, is, is factual, but then, granted, B's could be thinking, "Oh, unplayable ball rule. I hadn't thought about that. Maybe, you know, maybe I should." But, you know, that's, that starts, that's getting close to the line, but I think that's probably okay. I was probably not quite giving advice. But it's, it's something to be aware of, and especially even when, when officiating, you just want to lay out the options for the player, let the player decide, and not try to influence the player as to which option he should take. Let's see, eight dash one slash 20, we talked earlier about how the advice rule applies only during the round, so therefore it's okay to exchange advice during the suspension of play. Decision eight dash one slash 22, now, this group does a lot with high school and collegiate golf, just something to keep in mind, that if you have two teammates playing together in that format, then unless it's true four ball play, they are not partners. They're just teammates, which means they may not exchange advice. And then that's one thing, it'll be interesting to see exactly what the format is of the Olympics this summer, where I think, I think the formats for each, for each country to have two players and play 72 holes of stroke play, count both their scores for each round. And I wonder if, or I hope they would not have the two teammates play together, so therefore they won't, won't be tempted to exchange advice, but, but we'll see. Let's see. And eight dash two is relatively straightforward. Any questions on rule eight? Yeah, Gary?
Going back to decision eight dash one slash six.
Okay.
If the players exchanged information after they hit their tee shot on a par three, after they both hit tee shots and walking up the green, would that be a penalty? And if not, why wouldn't it do what, what happens during the stipulated round?
Okay, so let's say you and I hit our tee shots on number eight, and one was so short, one was long, or what have you. And we're walking up to the green, and I say, "Gary, what club did you hit?" And you say, "I hit six iron. What did you hit?" I said, "I hit seven iron. I wish I'd hit six." Is that a problem? Answer is no, that, that's okay. The only time that could be an issue during that hole is say, if at the time I asked that question, if I asked you, "Gary, what club did you hit?" Yeah, it, it was possible, if not likely, that I might have to return to the tee. So for example, if I hit my tee shot into the bushes or near the boundary, and there's a fair chance that I'm going to have to go back to the tee, then I think you'd say, then I'm asking for advice. But if it's more of just a curiosity factor, just, you know, I'm trying to figure out why I came up so far short, you know, did I, did I hit it worse than I thought, or did I just hit the wrong club, or both, or what? Then that, that'd be okay. Yeah, it'd be, and that'd be similar somewhat to the next decision, eight dash one slash seven. A plays a second shot which lands on the green, B does likewise. A then asks B what club he used. Was A in breach of rule eight dash one? No.
Let me ask you this, but, you know, I, on the seventeenth hole at U Ridge, remember the seventeen hole you hit? There, in team competition, there, many times, there's a backup on the team. I always worry that when teammates come up, and they all talk to each other, that's normal. But I worry that one will say, "What did you hit?" Now, the coach could tell him what he did, couldn't he?
Yeah.
But can the player tell him?
Okay, all right, all right. So say seventeenth tee at U Ridge, high school competition, there's a backup. A player, a teammate gets to the tee and says, you know, "What are you thinking about hitting?" Can he say that? And the answer is no, he may not. But he certainly, the coach, though, could certainly relay that information, say, "Well, John up ahead hit four iron and came up short. You should hit three." And that, you know, that, that'd be fine. I'd prefer the coach to do that. But you're right, that, I, that could be a problem when you have a backup on the tee, and they're going to talk.
Well, and I have one question, asking if John could draw the decision eight dash two B slash two, on page one forty-four.
All right, eight dash two B slash two, and it's an interesting decision, and it's one where really you can make a case as to, you can make an argument for a, for a different result, but let's look at. Player's ball lies on the putting green, and his caddy attends the flagstick for him. The caddy suggests before the stroke that the player aim at the caddy's left foot. Is the player in breach of rule eight dash two B? And the answer is broken down into two parts, whether the foot was placed there initially for that purpose. If the caddy had placed his foot in position for the purpose of pointing out line for putt, then the player was in breach as soon as the caddy places foot for that purpose. Then the breach could not be corrected. However, if the caddy just went up to attend the flagstick, and then, once he was there, he looked around and said, "Oh, here, yeah, aim at my left foot." Then there's no breach at that point. But the decision does go on to say that the player would be in breach of rule eight dash two B if the caddy did not remove that foot to another position before the stroke. So really, what the rules makers are saying, that at that point, it's almost as if the caddy is almost, if he leaves it there, he's almost being deemed to have placed something there for that purpose, and therefore it has to, it has to be moved. And, you know, and it's an interesting decision, because we can discuss and debate how far that principle applies, and that, for example, what if a player puts his water bottle down the side of the green just for the purpose of getting it out of his hand? And then when he's surveying his putt, he realizes, "Oh, hey, that water bottle is actually, turns out to be a pretty good line. I'm going to aim at that." Is he required to move that water bottle before the stroke? Well, we don't quite know from this decision, that the principle of this decision might suggest that he would. But on the other hand, the rule itself might suggest that he would not have to move it. So, so I'm not sure what the answer is in that case, but we know that these were this decision, that it was the caddy himself, that he has to move that, move that foot. All right, any questions on rule eight? All right, on to rule nine, information as to strokes taken. Nine dash one, number of strokes a player has taken includes any penalty strokes he's incurred. For example, it's whether it's taking relief from a water hazard or- For example, it's whether it's taking relief from a water hazard or uh penalty for breach of the rule. Uh, match play, and this is primarily a match play rule. An opponent is entitled to ascertain from the player during the play of a whole number of strokes he has taken and after the play of a whole number of strokes taken on the hole just completed. As a match play, how your opponent is doing can directly affect uh your play and your strategy. So therefore you have the right uh to know that. Nine dash two B, a player must not give wrong information. If he gives wrong information, he loses the hole. So that is straightforward. And then the rest of the rule really just defines what it uh what wrong information is. And notice throughout this that you'll see incorrect information and then you'll see wrong information. That anytime a player gives wrong information, he loses the hole. And that's that. But if he gives incorrect information, he's allowed a certain amount of time within which to correct that mistake and to keep that incorrect information from becoming wrong information. So let's uh walk through these three sections. Uh, a player is deemed to have given wrong information. If he fails to inform his opponent as soon as practicable that he has incurred a penalty, unless he was obviously proceeding under a rule involving a penalty and this was observed by his opponent. Or B, he corrects the mistake before his opponent makes his next stroke. All right, so uh Arnold and I are playing together, playing a match against each other. And on the fourth hole, I hit my ball into a lateral water hazard. And Arnold sees me go over, measure two club links from where the ball uh went in the hazard and then drop the ball. Uh, I do not have to tell him, Arnold, I'm adding one penalty stroke to take relief because he can see what I am uh doing. Or if I give incorrect information and correct that before Arnold makes his next stroke. So let's say we're on the green and I lie four and Arnold lies four. And he says, John, what do you lie? And I tell him something else. Let's say I tell him that I lie five. Uh, and then let's say I putt, it's my turn to play and then I putt. But then before Arnold putts, I say, oops, Arnold, I was wrong. I did originally lie four, now I lie five after that putt. In that case, there's no penalty, corrected uh my mistake. And it uh, one point to keep in mind is it where it talks about play, you have to inform your opponent as soon as practicable that you've incurred a penalty. Look at uh decision nine dash two slash one, which clarifies what as soon as practicable means. The phrase is purposely broad so as to allow for consideration of the circumstances in each situation, especially the proximity of the two players. Thus informing the opponent as soon as practicable of a penalty uh does not in all cases mean doing so before the opponent uh makes his next stroke. So uh, let's say, for example, that Andy and I are playing a match and I'm off in the right trees and Andy's in left trees. So we're sixty yards apart. It's my turn to play and I play and my ball uh strikes a tree and then it strikes my golf bag, which we'll see later on rule nineteen via one stroke penalty. But then Andy was sixty yards away, you know, can't see what's happened. And just ten seconds, five or ten seconds after I play, Andy plays. Uh, so I did not tell him of my one stroke penalty before he played. But given how far apart we were, we'd say that's okay. That uh, I'm just because I did not inform them of the penalty before his of his next stroke does not mean that I did not inform him as soon as practicable. So as soon as we emerge from the trees and meet up, then I'll say, Andy, just so you know, this happened in the trees. I now lie five, not four. And that that would be okay. Uh, players deemed to have given wrong info. And then with this, I'm sorry, back to the first point. Uh, an important point is the final paragraph of nine dash two B. A player has given wrong information even if it is due to the failure to include a penalty that he did not know he'd incurred. So so that's where that gets is important is what we talked about last week with rule two dash five. If there's a match play, when's when can you make a late claim? That if Bill and I were walking down the fifth hole, when could Bill make a claim about something I did during play of number three? Well, that'd only be if with what happened on number three, Bill was not aware of the facts of the situation. Example we used, I think, was that I removed a pine cone from a bunker in which my ball lay. Uh, so Bill was unaware of the facts and I had given Bill wrong information. So which means that I had incurred a penalty and I had not told him of that penalty. So even the if I knew nothing about the rules and didn't know I had incurred a penalty, I am still deemed to have given Bill wrong information on the third hole. So significance of that is that Bill can then make a late claim, say, while we're walking down number five, about what happened on number three when he becomes aware of uh the facts. All right, uh, second point, uh, players deemed to have given wrong information. If he gives incorrect information during play of a hole during a number of strokes taken and does not correct the mistake before his opponent makes his next stroke. So now this, we're not talking about as soon as practicable, we're talking about before his uh next stroke. So Bill asks of what I lie and I don't give him the correct answer and then Bill plays, I've given wrong information. And penalty for that is loss of hole. Third is that uh after play of a hole, uh, I give incorrect information during number of strokes taken. And this affects uh Bill's understanding of the result of that hole. I've given wrong information unless I correct that mistake before either one of us place from from the next tee. So and let's go through two examples of that. Uh, Bill and I have just finished the twelfth hole and Bill says, John, what'd you score there? And I say, you know, I scored four. And I say, Bill, what'd you make? And Bill says, I had seven, so you won. Uh, so at that moment, uh, what's the, what do we think the result is? We think I won the hole. Now, what if we tee off on the next hole and walking on the next fairway, I say, Bill, I'm sorry, I was wrong. I actually uh scored seven also. Then have I given wrong information? Answer is yes, because my incorrect information did uh result in a different understanding of the result of the hole. But Bill teed off the next hole thinking he lost it. In fact, he should have known that he'd we'd have the hole. So I had given wrong information in that case. Now, what if we tee off on the next hole and I say, Bill, oh, sorry, uh, just so you know, I already didn't make a four, I made a five. I forgot I missed that three footer. So in that case, has that incorrect information affected Bill's understanding of the result? Answers no, because Bill thought he lost the hole. Whether I made four or five, he still loses the hole. So it does not affect his understanding. So in that case, no wrong information, no penalty. All right, and stroke play, uh, rule is much more straightforward. Competitor who's incurred a penalty should inform his marker as soon as practicable. Notice it's a suggestion, it's not a requirement because uh what's the moment of truth with scoring in stroke play? When you return your scorecard, that's when everything has to be uh correct. All right, the decisions. Uh, see, let's look at decision nine dash two slash six. Uh, in part, this is a good, good example of the application of rule two dash two. In match play, A holes out and states to B his opponent that he'd scored a four. B, who's already played four, uh picks up the green, he's lost the hole. A then realizes he'd scored a five. He immediately tells B, what's the ruling? All right, well, A gave wrong information uh and A would normally lose the hole. However, given the circumstances that A had hold out and that his opponent had a stroke to have the hole, then per rule two dash two, the hole was halved rather than the normal loss of hole penalty being applied. And then uh, you have an interesting decision nine dash three slash one, uh, which was uh given a new answer a few years ago. But what to do when you have a hole by hole playoff? And even though we really don't think about wrong information in being in stroke play, what happens if um if that if wrong information is exchanged? So the facts are that B has completed the playoff hole in five. Uh, A has a putt for a five and asks B what he's taken. B wrongly states the holdout in four. So A picks up his ball thinking, geez, I lost the hole. B then corrects the error. What's the ruling? All right, well, if B intentionally misled A, then B should be disqualified under rule thirty-three dash seven. But if A made a mistake or if B made a mistake, B encourages no penalty. There's uh, there's no penalty for giving wrong information in uh stroke play. Now, however, and this where it gets interesting, that in these circumstances, B should be deemed to have caused the movement of A's ball. So in these limited circumstances, uh, rule eighteen dash four applies, which means no penalty to either player and A must replace his ball. Uh, that this uh is a uh change at more uh player friendly position than uh the answer used to be. This, I was, I'm sure a lot of you remember, the answer used to be, well, uh, player B or player A lifts his ball, got it and marked his position. He has a penalty stroke. There's no getting around that. That was the old, old uh answer. Any questions on rule nine? It is worthwhile to spend some time looking at nine dash two decisions just to get uh comfortable with the whole concept of wrong information. And all and all as we said earlier, often uh rules two dash five and nine dash two go hand in hand. So that's helpful. All right, on to rule ten. The order of play. Uh, the first two sections of this rule, uh, talk about match play and stroke play. Then the third section for provisional ball or another ball from the team ground apply to both forms of play. In match play and stroke play, the general premise is the same, but the consequence for playing out of turn uh is different for each form of play. Uh, ten dash one, A, side that has the honor at the first team ground is determined by the order of the draw. So if you have, say, match play tournament and look at the brackets, the name on top will have honor at the first tee. If it's the groupings and stroke play, then you just go by the order in which there the players are listed, see who has honor at the first tee. If there's not a draw, uh, for example, if Bill and I just go out and play a friendly match, then the honor should be decided by lot. You know, for example, by tossing a coin. The side that wins a hole takes the honor of the next team ground. The hole has been halved, the side that has honor at the previous team ground retains it. Something I think we all know well. Now, after both players have started play of the hole, the ball farther from the hole is played first. If the balls are equidistant from the hole or their positions relative to the hole are not determinable. For example, you have one ball way in the right trees, one ball way in the left trees, and you really can't tell whose ball is farther. And then determine the order of play by lot. The exception to all this is in four ball match play where the side may play in order it considers to be uh better. Now, the note is the only real wrinkle uh to this rule. And we'll look at some examples of that. There's there are several aspects to it. When it becomes known that the original ball is not to be played as it lies and the player is required to play a ball as nearly as possible at the spot from which the original was last played, the order of play is determined by the spot from which the previous stroke was made. All right, so let's look at uh two examples of that. Uh, let's say Ken and I are playing a match and uh, Ken hits his tee shot out in the fairway on a par four. I hit my tee shot and we can tell from the tee that it's out of bounds. There's no question about it. So then who would play next? Then I would play next because the reference point for determining the order of play would look at Ken's ball in the fairway. Then we'd look at the tee for me because I am required to play under stroking distance, to play from the spot of the previous stroke. So that's my reference point. And since the team ground is farther from the hole than Ken's ball lying in the fairway, I would have to play next. Yeah, so now let's now let's uh change the facts a little bit. Where Ken hits his tee shot out in the fairway and I hit my tee shot into the trees, uh, but in front of where Ken's ball lies. Uh, so we go forward, have my fingers crossed, I'll be able to find it and it'll be playable. Ken hits his second shot. Then we go forward, search for my ball, we can't find it. We look for five minutes, don't find it. So then what do I have to do? I have to go back to the team ground. So has Ken played out of turn? Answer is no. This is Bill says, the key is those first four words, when it becomes known. When when did it become known that I would have to return to the tee? After Ken had already played, so he has not played out of turn and I would have to go back to the team ground to uh play another ball. Now, let's look at the second half of the note. When a ball may be played from a spot other than where the previous stroke was made, the order of play is determined by the position where the original ball came dressed. Now, let's look at uh, well, there there are some decisions. Let's just start with the basic one where let's say now the next hole, Ken and I are playing. And Ken hits his tee shot in the fairway and he's a hun- hundred and fifty yards from the hole. And I hit my ball into a lateral water hazard on the right. And my ball lying in the lateral water hazard is one hundred and twenty-five yards from the hole. But where I'm going to take relief is going to be one hundred and seventy-five yards from the hole. And Ken's ball's at one fifty from the hole. Uh, and I want to take relief. So then who would play next? In that case, it'd be Ken. Just what do we compare? We compare Ken's ball in the fairway, one fifty out versus my ball in the lateral water hazard, one twenty-five out. And since Ken's ball's farther from the hole, he plays next, period. Regardless of what I do, regardless of whether I'm going to play my ball from the hazard or regardless of which relief option I elect to use uh in in that case. So one way to look at it is that when the player has options, when he doesn't have to play from the spot of the previous stroke, uh, that he cannot manipulate order of play based on whether he takes relief and if so, which relief option he elects to use.
Now, that's if the if Ken went back and dropped his ball, so he sort of gave him a steal and that's what he's going to do. And then he became one hundred and seventy-eight and uh, he would still be, who's up?
No, he would still be, well, I I was the one dropping the ball. So if if even if I dropped the ball at one seventy-five, Ken would still be the one to play next.
You know, where the ball has been dropped?
Yes, e- even if the ball's been dropped. And it'll be, there are a few decisions that provide some examples uh of that. Look at this, the very first one, ten slash one. A and B hit their balls in the ground repair. The balls are approximately eighteen inches apart. A's ball is farther from the hole. Both players decide to take relief. Is the order of play for next shot determined by the relative positions of the ball before relief is taken or after? Answer, the order of play is determined by relative positions before relief is taken. So therefore, A will play before B. Then the uh next two decisions are offer some similar themes. All right, now in match play, what happens if a player plays when his opponent should have played? Well, there's no penalty, but the opponent has the option either of letting the stroke stand or by uh requiring the player to cancel and replay the stroke in the correct order. So depend, you know, it could depend as to how good a shot or how bad a shot uh the player played out of turn as well as how nice a guy the opponent has or is. Um, there can be uh uh some awkward situations. Probably remember the Solheim Cup in, I think it was around two thousand when uh the four ball match, Annika Sorenstam uh chipped in. And then the Americans realized she had played out of turn. And after much conferring, they wanted her to replay that stroke in the correct order. Uh, and she did, she didn't make it, but it was uh, it was a pretty uh left a bitter taste in a lot of people's mouths. But you know, the Americans were certainly within their right to have uh to have done that. All right, uh, stroke play, starting play of the hole is the same uh process. Now, during play of the hole is the same with the same note. The only difference with stroke play- The only difference with stroke play, with during play of the hole is with rule twenty-two. In that in stroke play only, not in match play, if you are asked to lift your ball because it either assists with someone's play or it interferes with someone's play, that you have the option to play first rather than lift. And we'll get into that under rule twenty-two. But in match play, you do not have that option if someone asks you to lift your ball. Now, playing out of turn in stroke play is different than in match play. There, there's no penalty in stroke play and the ball is played unless the committee determines the competitors have agreed to play out of turn for the purpose of giving one of them an advantage, in which case they are both disqualified. So let's say we have a case where Gary and I are playing together, stroke play tournament. Final hole, I've shot myself out of the tournament, Gary is tied for lead. We're both on the green. I am twenty feet from the hole, Gary is twenty-five feet from the hole, but we're on a similar line. And I go over and tell Gary, I said, look, I'm out of it, but let me at least help you. And I'll, and I putt first and show you the line. He says, John, thanks, you know, you're the best. And then, then as soon as we do that, then we would be disqualified. Is that because we agreed to play out of turn for the purpose of helping Gary? All right, ten dash three, provisional ball or another ball from the team ground. So another ball could include a lot of things. Could include a situation where you know your tee shot is out of bounds and you're not playing a provisional, you're just playing another ball under stroking distance. If a player plays a provisional ball or another ball from the team ground, he must do so after his opponent or fellow competitors made his first stroke. If more than one player plays another ball, then the original order of play is retained. So if, let's say, Bill, Ken and I are playing together and I have the honor and I hit one towards, into the trees and I want to play a provisional ball, I will wait until after Bill and Ken play before I play my provisional ball. Let's see, decision ten dash one C slash three was revised a few years ago. And it's a useful one to know. In match play, it's A's turn to play, but he realizes he left the club on the previous hole. He decides to return to retrieve the club and suggests that his opponent, B, play first to save time. If B then plays out of turn, as suggested, have the players agree to waive the rules and breach of rule one dash three. Answer is no. And we have an interesting exception and very specific exception here. When done solely for the purpose of saving time, player's turn is to play may invite his opponent to play first. Opponent's under no obligation to do so. But if he does so, the players waive his right under rule ten dash one C to recall the stroke played out of turn.
That would be new, different than the two balls were on opposite sides of the fairway. And player A says to player B, I think I'm away. And player B doesn't disagree. Then player A plays and player B has no, has given up his right of recall.
Oh yeah, I, I think that's a good way to look at that if, you know, can we get out there and say, Ken, whose turn is it? And, and you say, John, I think it's mine. Then you go ahead and play and then after you play, I'll call my rangeflinner and say, oh, no, actually, it was my turn to play. You played out of turn. Then I, you know, I can't do anything about it because I've already agreed to your procedure. And it's, it's, it's similar to, I think, that decision we talked about in rule two dash five where, let's say, you and I don't know a relief procedure and we agree that, say, I should drop a ball two club lengths from the cart path and I do so and play. And then after, after what you can't then make claim about is you and I agreed on it, so there was no doubt.
John, I brought this situation up last year, very similar with, with Ken, with very good. The four ball match play, A, B, and C. And A hits a ball on the green somewhere, B's a banked ball, four ball. C hits on the fringe, D hits it in the green side bunker. D says, oh, I'm going to play, I'll play. And he says it's to A and A goes, oh, whatever. And so he plays and holds it. And then B says, hey, wait a minute, it's my turn to play, I'm way back here like that. And we, we stepped, I came on the, I made the ruling and I ruled that whatever. And he said that was an acknowledgement allowing him to play. And I called the USGA after that, since it was a shady situation. And I talked to PJ Billware about that and he said, whatever didn't constitute an acknowledgement. And therefore, he should not have been able to surrender his right to play. And therefore, my ruling was incorrect. That's what he said. Now, what you're just saying is, you know, maybe kind of, I support whatever.
Well, well, part of it is that this decision is new. That this answer is, is, is maybe two or four years old. So I, I think that, that's, that's part of it. So, all right, well, any other questions on rule ten? Yeah, Gary?
Ten dash three, I guess it's a question of semantics, but we all know the USGA's emphasis on their words. So why do they use the word must in places in that paragraph rather than the word should?
Um, I think you could argue that because of the final sentence of saying that ten dash one C or ten dash two C applies, that it doesn't matter that much. And they probably just err on saying, using the match play word term must. Because they're trying to be efficient in light, like both match play and stroke play. So, well, let's, you know. Yeah, and it's yeah, I think that that's it. And I think the final sentence really renders the point somewhat moot by saying what the answer is if in fact someone plays out of turn. That it's, like I said, they had to pick either must or should. And it's got one way or another, it was going to be wrong. For example, if it used should, then, you know, a valid question would be, well, why doesn't it say must? All right, well, let's finish up with rule eleven for the day. There, we just talked about the team or the order of play. So let's talk about how the players will actually start play of the hole. Rule eleven dash one, when the player's putting the ball into play from the team ground, it must be played from within the team ground and from the surface of the ground or from a conforming tee in or on the surface. So several things, you have to play from within the team ground. Rule eleven dash four, we'll talk about that in more detail. And then it's very specific as to how, how the ball can be teed. It either has to be on the, on the surface of the ground, which we see later includes an irregularity of surface, which could be created by the player or a conforming tee in or on the surface of the ground. So, you know, this has largely been with us since two thousand and four, but previously, people probably remember, player might get to a hole where wanted a big high shot and would tee his ball on a pencil. But now, since a pencil is not meeting definition of tee, that would not be permissible. In PGA, USGA rules classes, they show a video of John Daly hitting his ball on a Diet Coke can and hitting it off that during competition. And that has not been permissible since two thousand and four. So it's pretty specific that if a player makes a stroke at a ball on a non-conforming tee or a ball teed in a manner not permitted, he is disqualified. Note one, one of the stipulations with the tee back in appendix four is that it can't be longer than four inches. But it doesn't matter that if you take a five inch tee and you press it in the ground two inches, only three inches is above the ground, that's still a non-conforming tee you're using. If you make a stroke at a ball with it, you are disqualified. All right, eleven dash two, tee markers, which are kind of interesting objects that obviously serve an important role on, function on the golf course. Before a player makes his first stroke with any ball from, from the team ground, the tee markers are deemed to be fixed. In these circumstances, if the player moves or allows to be moved a tee marker for the purpose of avoiding interference for the stance, area of intent, swing or his line of play, he encourages a penalty for breach of rule thirteen dash two. So if, let's say, if it's a dog leg right and you're trying really hard to stand at the very left edge of the team ground for this big tee markers in your way, you just can't move it out of the way. That if you do so, that'd be a breach of rule thirteen dash two. But then, right next to it, you might just jot down decision eleven dash two slash two. And we won't go through these, but this has a list of situ, of five situations where a player moves a tee marker for various reasons. It could be that he thinks the tee markers aren't lined up correctly or in the wrong place or he lifts the tee marker just because it's an interesting decorative item and he wants a closer look at it or because he's upset with it and kicks it or swats it with his club. And the decision will tell us the ruling in each case. In some cases, there's a penalty, in some cases, there's not a penalty. In some cases, the player is required to replace the tee marker before anyone plays.
Can I still ask a question on eleven dash one?
Yeah.
What, what is the determination of a conforming tee?
Oh, what's a conforming tee? Back, back in appendix four, in the back of the rules booklet, and what's that, five? Five eighty-three. Yeah, it talks about several stipulations. Says, among other things, a tee must not be longer than four inches, must not be designed or manufactured in such a way that could indicate line of play, must not unduly influence the movement of the ball, such as you can't, sometimes you see a tee that has kind of a cup that comes between the club face and the ball to try to reduce the spin.
John, you have a need to get, when this rule was, of these, all aside, so we put in the fact?
Uh, yeah, it was put in, I think, two thousand and four. And part of the reason for that is that they started seeing long drive competitions. Players were using very, very long tees. And actually, the organizers of long drive competitions approached the USGA saying, just so you know, this is coming, this could well be an issue, the tee height.
So prior to that, John Daly may have been okay on that?
Oh, yeah, 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 prior to that, that was okay. Prior to that, it was okay to use a pencil and you see other odd things.
When I first started playing, there was a sandbox on it.
Yeah, and that, that's still okay to use. You can still create a little patch of sand.
Or strong, Gary.
But the sand pile can't be more than four inches, huh?
No, no, actually, there's no limit for the sand pile.
Ken, my father told me about the sandbox.
I do have a question that they come up with, team last year. Under rule thirteen dash two, you're allowed to create an irregularity of surface on the team ground to tee a ball. We had a player who we won't mention again, would slam his driver into the ground, beating what I would call a two to three inch hole in the team ground. And then would place his ball on the front edge of that and strike it off the ground and then leave the tee leaving this gigantic gouge in the tee. Certainly, there isn't a rule that prohibits that. And it's a suggestion on how you
Wish there were. Yeah, well, it's, it's, yeah, well, I'll tell you, an interesting case, back when I worked for the USGA at the US Women's Open each year, when another staff member and I would go around and set tee markers in the morning, we could always see where Laura Davies had played the year before, but she would do this, or the day before, but she would do the same thing, slam her driver in the ground or, or her one or two iron and tee the ball. And sometimes you look at it and say, gee, this just isn't good. What if every player in the field did this? And from a rules of golf perspective, there's really nothing you can do to prohibit it. I, I think there are other ways to look at it from, say, a disciplinary matter. Say, look, obviously, rules allow, golf allow you to do this. But if you want to continue to be eligible to play in our tournaments, you need to repair it after you play from it. You know, or other, just, just say something like that.
To activate how, but there were a number of players.
Because it's addressed in the etiquette section now.
There were a number of players that wanted this player disqualified.
All right, eleven dash three, ball falling off the tee. If the ball when not in play, so meaning before, first stroke of that ball falls off the tee or is knocked off the tee by the player, may be re-teed because there's no penalty because the ball's not in play, but if the stroke is made, even if the ball's moving, the stroke is, stroke counts, but there's no penalty. So there would be no penalty for playing a moving ball in such circumstances. Eleven dash four, somewhat like order of play, yet very different results in match play and stroke play if a player plays from outside the team ground. Match play, if a player, when starting the hole, plays from outside the team ground, there's no penalty, but his opponent has the option, let the stroke stand or require the player to play from within the team ground. In stroke play though, it's a different situation. But in stroke play, remember, you need to make sure that all players in the field play the same course, which means starting each hole from the same spot and finishing each hole to the same hole location. So in stroke play, if a player plays from outside the team ground, he incurs a penalty of two strokes and must correct that mistake before teeing off on the next hole or be disqualified. Now, one point to keep in mind with, actually, both of these sections is that rule eleven dash four applies only when you're starting play of the hole. It does not apply to any subsequent strokes from the team ground. So let's say, for example, that in, let's say, both match play and stroke play, that I play from within the team ground and the ball goes out of bounds. So now I have to come back to the tee under stroking distance. And I tee up and play from a foot outside the team ground. So in match play, what's the ruling? Match play, it's a loss of hole penalty. I've, I've simply played from the wrong place. In stroke play, I've played from the wrong place and, but it wouldn't be what we call a serious breach, but as I haven't gained a significant advantage. So in stroke play, what would be the total penalty in that case? It'd be three penalty strokes. One penalty stroke for going out of bounds and then two more for playing from the wrong place. So that is, the key point there is that this is not a rule eleven dash four situation. Once I played the first tee shot from within the team ground, then rule eleven dash four no longer applies. So really, what I was in breach of was the out of bounds rule. So a combination of twenty-seven dash one and twenty dash five. All right, let's see, some decisions. One decision that, it's uncanny that people really like to talk about. I guess it's interesting, is eleven dash five slash three. A played B in a match. A drove out of bounds from the wrong team ground. B did not recall the stroke. What's the ruling? Well, the question is, how does A go about then putting his ball into play from that wrong team ground? Well, what's the status of that wrong team ground? It's through the green because it's, it is in fact not his team ground. So when you have to proceed under stroking distance through the green, how do you do so? By dropping the ball, exactly. All right, any questions on rule eleven? All right, well, if not, well, we'll call it, call it a day. And next week, Bill, I think we're on Friday, is that right?
Oh, Thursday.
Oh, are we? Okay, all right.
We're next Thursday.
Thursday, okay, all right. So next week is Thursday and we'll start on rule twelve, then we'll hit rule thirteen, which is a very big rule. And we'll have a good time and.
Talking about the eleven four B three, to, to a hole where there's only one tee block. What you do, and it says here that you're supposed to call the committee up and keep doing that in a tournament. That just saves a whole lot of time.
Okay, so eleven four B three, if there are no tee markers or if there's one tee marker. What do you, or actually, no, eleven four B, what, two or three?
Three.
Three, okay, let's see, so three is when both are missing. Three, okay, let's see, so three is when both are missing. Well, I mean, obviously that's a pretty big point because if you're, if they're missing for your group, then they're going to be missing for every group behind. So it's going to, every group, it, it makes sense to try to get the issue squared away, away with your groups. Because otherwise, then the next group will be thinking, what do, what do we do? And it's, and it's difficult because, and that's really one of the dangers with stroke play is that you really want to make, need to make sure that everyone plays the same course. And, you know, the decision offers some leeway in terms of if you see the pink dots that were, that indicate where it was, you could play from there or, you know, any other indication where it's clear where the tee marker should be. But otherwise, the committee really needs to clarify where the tee markers are. And this, where you could have a real problem is, let's say, the tee markers are in position for the first four groups and then all of a sudden they're gone. So you know four groups, you've already played from the right place and you need to make sure that everyone else plays from the same place. And that's why the committee, more often than not, needs to get involved just to make, is the committee needs to say, look, this is the right place. And you're right, it could be a delay of 10, 30 minutes. But, you know, that's one thing that is interesting these days and something I keep forgetting about that, but I know, you know, I've seen, you know, people in this room when they're, when you have just say, two officials at a tournament, sometimes put on a local rule sheet their cell phone numbers. Say, look, if something comes up, you know, call, call, call me, call these two officials and hear their cell phone numbers. Just try to expedite things.
Somewhere in my mind I read where if there's one tee mark, then you still can't.
Let's see, the, yeah, I think the previous one.
Yeah, you, then you've got, you've still got.
Yeah, well, in the, in the first one, it says, 11 dash 4B slash 2, it says, the correct procedure is to discontinue play until the committee resolves the problem. So that's correct. However, if the committee satisfies the competitors and not gain an advantage, then the committee could accept their score. So with one tee marker, I, I think one tee marker is a lot different than two, two tee markers missing. So with one tee marker, you're going to be in general area. It's pretty easy to tell where, where you should be.
What if the maintenance crew when mowing the tee, they take the tee marker and they put them on a stump, easy, right?
Oh.
And they're sitting there. And he forgot to put them down. So if he teed up, that would be okay, wouldn't it?
Well, yeah, and sometimes that can happen where, let's say you have a, a long narrow tee and the person mowing the tee has removed the tee markers, just stuck them to the side and they walk, moved the tee markers and didn't move them back. Player comes long, she uses the tee markers and they walk and plays between them. Well, and I think you could argue that's, you could say that's okay as long as everyone plays from there. That's fine and that's, because that's where the tee markers are. They weren't necess, the committee didn't necessarily place them there for that purpose, but the committee could effectively give them their blessing. Yeah, well, yeah, and then, and that, that's, that's one point where if you have luxury in terms of staffing at tournaments to put a dot, dot your tee markers each day, like one white dot for the first round, two white dots for the second round. So if a tee marker is moved, it's easy to tell where it belongs. All right, well, I hope, I hope everyone has a good weekend. Look forward to seeing you all next Thursday.
Thank you. Thank you, John.